The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Public Workshop of the Marion County School Board to order at 5:30 PM. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each of their school days, we will now pause for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public workshop. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. This public workshop is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any public workshop item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and the Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, would you please provide the proof of publication for this evening's workshop?
The notice for the July 13, 2023, public workshop ran in the Ocala Gazette on June 30, 2023.
Thank you so much. We'll now begin this public workshop with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good evening, Dr. Gullett.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I was going to share something, but I think I'll hold it until the 20th. And so, in light of the topic tonight, I'll hold and share some of our opportunities that we had today with our principals. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So, on to our proposed impact fee rate increase. Attorney Powers, would you like to kick us off for this topic, please?
Yes, ma'am. This is the second of our two public workshops to be held on this item. And this is to both notify the public and also give an opportunity for comment period regarding the increase of impact fees and specifically our role as a school board in determining whether there exist special circumstances which would allow us to increase the impact fee beyond the statutorily defined limit and into the next category. The documents that have been uploaded to Board Docs and were ready and provided before tonight's meeting include both the study done by the consultant, Benish, who have prepared that study. It's been presented at former workshops. In addition to document that outlines the short and long-term range plans for construction of capital outlay projects within the district. Both those are available to the public on the Marion County Schools, MarionSchools.net website. And tonight, we will further discuss any issues that the Board wishes to delve into regarding that and any public comment which would be had.
Thank you so much, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers that have turned in forms so far?
We have two speakers.
We'll probably have more based on the forms that I see in the audience, but we'll start with the two that you have.
Mr. Brian Smallwood.
Good afternoon. I want to thank you first for the opportunity to speak before the Board about the impact fees. I'm here on behalf of the Marion County Builders Association. Just wanted three points. I'm kind of a stickler for numbers, so I've had a little bit of an opportunity to look at the impact fee study and also go through some of the items on the previous year's budgets over the last few years. And you'll have to forgive me when I present some of these because in the budget information, there's multiples on the website, so the numbers have a little bit of varying information. But I did want to point out this one, which was from 2023, and it shows that the enrollment in 2018, 2019 was about 42,300 students. And the proposed for this current year that just ended, it was about 44,000 students, 44,025. And the reason, which is about a 1,700 student difference is projected over the course of those five years. At the same time, is through the historical budget data, the budget, the overall budget for the school board or the school system was $554 million five years ago. This last year, it was $905 million. So, there's a $351 million increase in revenue over the last five years. Taking also looking at the required disclosure by Section 1010.20 of the Florida statutes, which lays out the amount of funding used for the direct and indirect expenditures for students based on the FTEs. That same timeframe where there was an additional $351 million in additional funding, there was only a $31 million increase in funding directly related to the, directly for the students. So, I think, you know, when I'm looking at the numbers, while I believe there may be a potential that there is a need for some type of an impact fee, I believe before going down the road of determining what exactly that number is, should probably, I think it may be wise for the Board to actually look at what the expenditures are and where that extra $351 million in additional funding per year that's come in since the last five years. I also, just one more point I want to make is in the most recent, in a 2022, 2023 work plan that was issued by the, at the Board meeting, there was, already budgeted with the budget working out the next five years, there is already $170 million plus that's been earmarked of the future year's budgets for new construction and remodeling. That's in addition to the close to $50 million, I'm sorry, $49 million to pay off existing debt and debt service items. Between the two, it's $220 million. And I guess kind of-
Your time is expired.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smallwood.
Mr. Lynn Raccepi.
Good evening, Board. My name is Lynn Raccepi, and I'm a resident of Marion County. Appreciate your time and allowing me to offer some comments. First off, I appreciate the Board completing the long-range planning study and updating the information aligned with the 2008 Agreement for Public School Facility Planning and School Concurrence. Successful implementation of this will ease the burden on current and future taxpayers as well as provide the necessary capital for additional schools to meet current and expected student populations. I reviewed the information in the PowerPoints provided, so I do appreciate those being posted. I have not reviewed the actual work product, so if that is available online as the council noted, then I will take a look at that. One of the things I did notice that the average used for the average housing unit factors was the arithmetic mean from 2017 to 2021. But when you look at the data from 2019 to 2020, there was a 60% increase in housing permits. When you look at the data again from 2020 to 2021, there was another approximately 60% increase in housing permits from about 3,800 to over 6,000. While the arithmetic mean for 2017 to 2021 is accurate, the key question in my mind is why is 2022 data not included in the five-year average? Okay? If you look at a simple sensitivity analysis, if I took 75% of 2021 and calculated from 2018 to 2022, the average permits per year would be over 4,000 versus the 3,500 value used. On the other hand, if permits increased by 25% for 2022, that average value used would be over 4,500 versus 3,500. As you know, the reason the focus on this is that this is used with student generation rate translated into capital expenditure needs. So, if we're going to do it, I'm not clear why 2022 was not used by your consultant. The study was completed in 2023. I'm sure the data was available and you all could get the data from the building department. I'm raising this concern because I'm not interested in the arithmetic mean. I'm interested in how well we can project forward with some accuracy. So, I do appreciate your time and attention. Look at this as an equitable process that we can ease the burden of taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raccepi.
David Tillman.
Good evening. David Tillman, President of the Marion County Building Industry Association. Today, I stand before you to address an issue paramount, of paramount importance to our society, the intersection of school impact fees and affordable housing. This topic lies at the heart of our commitment to ensuring equitable and accessible education for all children while also addressing the pressing need for affordable housing in our communities. It is a challenge that demands our attention, collaboration, and thoughtful action. School impact fees, as you know, are a mechanism used by local governments, generate revenue for schools' infrastructure projects. These fees are typically imposed on developers and builders while they construct new residential or commercial properties as they contribute to the increased demand for educational facilities. While the intent behind such fees is noble, we must also consider their potential unintended consequences on affordable housing. Affordable housing is a critical pillar of any thriving community as it fosters inclusivity, social cohesion, and economic stability. It ensures that individuals and families of diverse backgrounds can call our neighborhoods homes. Home, excuse me. Regardless of their income levels, however, the rising cost of housing has placed a significant burden on many individuals and families, making it increasingly difficult for them to find safe and affordable homes within our communities. The challenge we face today is to strike a delicate balance between funding our schools and ensuring the availability of affordable housing options. We cannot allow our children's education opportunities to suffer, nor can we disregard the importance of providing affordable housing to those who need it most. We must seek harmonious solutions that uphold both commitment to education and social equity. To achieve this, it is crucial that we engage in open and transparent dialogue, bringing together all stakeholders involved, including representatives from local government, school districts, developers, community organizations, and concerned citizens. Through collaborative efforts, we can work towards finding innovative solutions that reconcile the competing need for school funding and affordable housing. First and foremost, we must promote the sharing of data and research to better understand the impact of school impact fees on affordable housing. By conducting comprehensive studies and analysis, we can gain a clear understanding of the consequences of these fees on housing costs, availability, and ultimately, the social fabric of our communities. This evidence-based approach will provide us with the necessary insight to develop effective policies and solutions. Secondly, we must explore alternative funding mechanisms that do not disproportionately burden developers or place an excessive strain on the availability of affordable housing. This could include leveraging public-private partnerships, seeking federal or state funding sources, or implementing creative financing strategies. By diversifying our funding streams, we can alleviate the burden on developers and builders and ensure that the provisions of affordable housing remains a priority. With only 10 seconds left, I must say that I don't feel like this full impact fee is something that our affordable housing can afford at this point because we're going to be looking at the new fees coming in on the new cost of septic tanks, because we're going to have to go to a new septic tank criteria that's going to add about $10,000 of cost per home. You're looking at adding potentially over $10,000 of cost per home. You're not going to be able to, teachers aren't going to be able to afford to move to our community and buy a house. And that's a problem we already have, is not being able to get teachers to come to our community. So, if we add $20,000 of cost per home-
Your time is expired.
-it will be very difficult for us to add new people. It's a circular problem, so we need to be very careful how we balance the amount we're going to charge when it comes to new housing.
May I ask if each of the three speakers have left contact information in case the Board wishes to reach out to you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Kevin Shealy.
Madam Chair, Board, good to be with you tonight. I do have copies of my comments that I will distribute to you afterwards in case I run out of time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this. Let me start by saying I understand and agree with the need to fund additional school space. That is not a debate. But I do have three areas of concern, and I also have some suggestions to go along with those concerns. Those areas are the effect on affordable housing, as you just heard, the effect on multifamily housing, and the longer-term impacts. As we think about affordable housing, as Mr. Tillman just shared, these are costs that are going to raise the cost of affordable housing. This is going to be for many of the employees of the school system, our teachers, our parents, and others. We've been spending a lot of time as a community, looking at ways to address affordable housing, putting a lot of time, energy, and money into this. And this is going to add cost to that. With that in mind, a quick suggestion is I would strongly encourage you to consider setting the impact fee for homes under 1,500 square feet at 10% of the recommendation from the report. This follows a model very similar to what the county uses on transportation impact fees. The situation with multifamily is similar, but yet also different. These costs are going to get passed straight on to the renters, just as on homes, it goes to the purchaser. But this is going to be passed on in monthly rent. And in talking to the developers and financiers, we anticipate this would cost in rent an additional $100 a month. And that would occur not only within new units, but then that sets the target, the standard, for all rental units. And so, we're going to see all rents continue to go up with that. You're going to be hiring a lot of brand-new teachers over the next few years. They're going to be looking to rent. This is going to directly impact their cost, and that's going to become a cost for the School Board at some point or another in salaries. I've met over the last couple of weeks with all of your high school principals and then today at the Principal Leadership Institute. Every principal told me their number-one challenge right now is hiring, and part of it is where are they going to live and where are they going to live that they can afford? This is going to directly impact the ability. We can build great schools, but it'd be a shame if we have no one to work and to staff those facilities. The other part is we have a housing crisis. We know that we need more homes. These fees will impact the ability to finance the multifamily. We're going to get to a point where it's simply, especially on affordable product, it's not going to be financially viable to build and support those. And so, I'd again encourage you to consider setting the multifamily fees at 10% of the recommendation. The last part is I know that the School Board is looking at other revenue streams as well, the potential of bonding a portion of the 1 mil and the school's capital outlay start tax. But it appears that these are all being approached from a piecemeal standpoint. I would really encourage you to take a moment, step back, slow the process slightly, and think about how do we do a comprehensive plan, strategic, looking at all of these. I think that'll be best received by the community, but to also engage the business community, the city, the county, the College of Central Florida, and others who all want to see our school system be successful. But I think we need to do that together. I have another suggestion on here that's regarding stepping down, just as the county does, on those impact fees based on size. I just want to end with this, if I may. I believe in our schools. My children attended Marion County Public Schools and were very well-prepared for university. We partner closely at the CP with the school system on CTE and now Equine and RV Tech and so many things. We want to continue to partner, and I think we can do that if we can focus on what would be best long-term versus the short-term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shealy.
Todd Rudiani.
Todd Rudiani, 1140 East 4 King Street, Ocala, Florida, 34471. Thank you for the work that you put into this. I know a lot went into it. So, I just wanted to better understand funding mechanisms for school capital projects in the state of Florida. We looked at all the schools that were within a range of Marion County, so 25,000 to 65,000 in enrollment, to try to understand where the funding mechanisms came from. And that's looking at capital outlay and debt service, the 1.5 mil, sales tax, and impact fees, your four primary mechanisms. It turns out that on a per-student basis, Marion County has the lowest funding of all 16 counties that we looked at. So, it's argued, there's a strong argument that we need to figure out how to better fund schools. Over half of those jurisdictions are using impact fees. So, there's an argument, again, that impact fees may be a viable recommendation for funding these school construction projects. But similar to what David Tillman and Kevin Shealy said, there's also the adverse effect of affordability impact. The schedule on page 92 of your presentation makes it look like our impact fees are comparable to some of the other counties in the state of Florida. But if you compare single-family in particular, impact fees with the median home sales price, 2022 UF Schimberg studies, you'll find that Marion County, it's the highest percentage of the average sale price of all of the counties that are on that page. So, I think that we need to strongly consider the impacts on affordability. As Mr. Shealy mentioned, a single price or a single fee, impact fee, is regressive, meaning that these smaller houses, these lower-priced houses are paying or taking on a higher-cost burden. So, I think it's important that we consider the nexus that's occurring when smaller or larger houses are being built and how to appropriately charge these fees if someone's building a 1,000-square-foot, 1,500-square-foot home as opposed to a 3,000-square-foot home. So, if these fees are lower, it means that funding mechanisms need to come from an alternative source. In that same dataset of 16 counties, we found that all but two were utilizing some form of sales tax revenue to help pay for school outlay. And that's one of two mechanisms, a half-cent for schools or a portion of an infrastructure sales tax that's approved by the county and the population within that county. The only other county, interestingly enough, other than Marion County, that wasn't using the sales tax mechanism was Collier County, which brought in nearly four times as much revenue when compared to Marion County in utilizing the 1.5 mil. So, I think it's important to note that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudiani. Not trying to interject there, but Collier County just paid cash for a brand-new school. So, cash is not an issue in Collier County. They just paid cash for a brand-new school. Ms. Martinez Lopez.
I apologize. I cannot see the letters for the last name. Nicholas, if you would be so kind to pronounce your last name, I would greatly appreciate that.
Good evening. Last name is Calamella, Nicholas Calamella. Thank you for the time. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm here as a member of the community, and I represent DR Horton, which is one of the home builders here in the area. I run the market for DR Horton for Marion County and some of the surrounding counties. So, I wanted to give you a perspective from a builder who, you know, spends most of my time during the day trying to figure out how to create affordable housing for the community, for the silver servants, for the teachers that service our community. So, just a couple of points that I had is, one, obviously, there's a need for some funding for schools and impact fees. So, I'm not here to say that we don't need something. We need to come up with a solution, a balance that works for everybody. But as a caution on, you know, going too fast, too hard, I've been with a lot of different areas as a builder in the state of Florida. I've seen how a lot of different counties handled the situation, and there are some alternatives. So, one thing that I'd like to bring up, and I've talked to Land Use Council about, is charter school options. Pasco County's done a really good job with charter schools. They've had a lot of growth over the last five to six years, and one of the ways that they kind of got themselves out of the situation was working through the charter school system. And happy to put the contacts out there to get the Board in touch and understand how that works and how that's funded whenever I can. So, that's one option that can help build schools at a less expensive price point. Taking on an impact fee of 10,000 or above for, you know, your average household in Marion County, your family moving into Marion County for work, is a big hit. Right now, with interest rates where they are, it is getting harder and harder to get people into homes. Simply, the market is the market. People can afford what they can afford, and we can build, and we can be creative to try to get the pricing down. But at the end of the day, this is going to be a direct pass on to our community and for our home buyers. So, you know, I want to caution the Board on how we take that approach and how fast we get there. A lot of counties have done tiered approaches to this, staggered approaches, somewhat, you know, using square foot as a guide to what the impact fees should be, is a good rule of caution here. We've had a lot of growth in Marion County. I've seen it. I've been in the community for six years, and there's been a lot of growth here. But I think the reason why there's a lot of growth here is because it's still an affordable place to live in the state of Florida. And for that to continue, we have to be able to deliver affordable housing and payments to buyers that they can afford with their jobs here in the county. So, that's it. I left my contact information, but if you have any questions, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calamella.
We have no more speakers, Madam Chair.
Are there any other speakers in the audience that may not have filled out a form but would like to come and offer public comment? Anybody else? Okay. With that, we will bring it back to the Board. So, we will begin with Board comments, starting with Ms. Martinez Lopez. Anything from the Board Clerk's office?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Powers.
Just as, by way of example, and there are many different examples to go into, the Benish study sort of speaks for itself, or the Benish study. And of course, both the Board and the speakers tonight will have read that and seen what information is there. However, I did want to address that in other counties, one thing that I had heard was that the price of the impact fees for the overall type of house and size of house, granted, we're not Orange County or Dade or something like that, but in Orange County, for example, the school portion of the impact fee for a mobile home is $9,132. So, even at mobile home rates, there's a significant variance within counties in the state, and it goes up from there depending on, you know, the size of the single-family or multifamily detached. So, the Board, of course, should pay attention to the differences between different types of housing as well in their analysis.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Dr. Gullett.
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. James?
Thank you. So, I just wanted to kind of make a brief comments about some of the information we heard tonight from the community and also just share briefly with the Board some conversations I've had with people who didn't speak tonight but have contacted me outside of here, as I'm sure all of us have received phone calls. Our main bulk of conversation about this is going to be next Thursday on our work session, but I just kind of- but I just kind of wanted to address a few things that were said tonight. So with regard to our budget, our expert is sitting in like the seventh row, but Ms. Boston Ellis is the one to really share the details of it. But our, our, our budget is very line itemed, and the expenditures on capital outlay, as I think it was Mr. Rudiani shared, we don't have this, while our budget has increased a lot, a lot of it is money tied to COVID money that is going to be gone. So it, it does seem like there's a big inflation, but it's not an inflation that we can spend on schools to build. The 2022 data, our second speaker spoke about that, that was a question that I also brought up, why the data from 2022 wasn't part of the study. And it's because the study was coming to its conclusion before 2022 came to its conclusion. And so while you're right, we didn't get briefed on the study until just a month or so ago, the work of the data collection was concluding before 2022 concluded, which is why 2022 data was not included. I believe, I'm seeing a head nod, but that was the reason I got when I asked that same question. So I would have also liked to see 2022's data included. I can, I completely hear the affordable housing remark, and one of the things I've really been mulling over for the last month or more, we spent money as a board, the board previous to me approved to have this study done, and we got the numbers from the consultant, and a, a single-family house is at 10,693, which is the number that's been presented. Apartment or condo is 9,728, and a mobile home park is 7,166. I, as a board member, am going to be coming to the board to suggest we adopt at 50% as our starting rate. But I can also appreciate the tiered approach that a couple of the speakers tonight mentioned, I think Mr. Shealy mentioned that one. And I can appreciate taking a tiered approach for homes under 1,500 square feet as well, because I, I don't necessarily think that the, the builder who's building the $500,000 house should pay the same potentially as someone who's building a smaller home. So I would very, be very interested in this board having that conversation too. But one thing from this seat that I'll bring forward is an adoption at 50% of what Benesh has recommended, and then going forward with an annual increase that is tied to legislation as the economy continues to hopefully do wonderful in Marion County, and we tie it to that. Mr. Rudiani had lots of valid points, I was a little cheerleader up here, listening to you speak. And I do believe we have to take it from a variety of perspectives. I think sales tax is something that's going to be something that this board talks about. But, and I can appreciate the idea of stepping back and slowing down to have this whole-circle conversation, but this board member's not going to support slowing this, slowing this train down anymore. We have to make a decision and we have to move forward. We are building two new schools, we are building wings, we are building things for students, and we have to make decisions. So this board member is not going to slow this train down, we're going to use the data that's been given to us, and we're going to make some really educated decisions. Our community, to my knowledge, and Dr. Gullett, maybe you can add perspective, did we have any charter applications this last year?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member James, I am not aware of any applications.
That's what I thought. We have not had historically charter applications in this community. Really, it's not been something that this community has gotten on board with. And so I would encourage people who are interested in creating charter schools in our community to come talk to the board, and let's have that conversation and see how we can help you. But the charter school program in Marion County is just, it's not incredibly strong. And Dr. Gullett, you're leaning forward, so I'll definitely let you on.
Thank you, I know you, you know my cues. Board Member James, I just want to clarify, no new charter schools. We've had the expansion, of course, and the board has approved that, but no new charter schools other than those.
We're adding a charter high school that's attached to Ocala Charter Middle, but no new charter schools have been coming forth to expand the opportunities in Marion County. So that's definitely a conversation that this board would love to have with the community, but it's not something that's happening right now. I did want to take a moment to share, at the board meeting on Tuesday night, I asked that a board member get placed on the selection committee for all of the selection work that our facilities department is doing and will be doing to select architects and contractors as a part of the process of building these new schools, and the board supported that. The next morning at 8:00 AM, I was participating in my first meeting. Little did I know. So I wanted to share just a little bit about what it's looked like so that the board understands. On, on Wednesday morning, we went and there were portfolios from architects, and I believe Ms. Dobbins or, or someone could share, I think the deadline for portfolios for the new schools is maybe tomorrow. It's coming up, it's very soon. So we were reviewing portfolios for architects for the Technology Center, and we have a rubric, and we're reviewing the portfolios, and there's a, a rubric that's been vetted by consultants, and it's pretty thorough, and we're looking at a variety of metrics. And one of the conversations that's come from the community, we do award points for people who've worked with Marion County Public Schools, and we do award points for people who are in our community. I am a community girl, I want to see people who are living and working in our community continuing to, to support our growth. So I'm really excited to be a part of it. I think that there is a lot of opportunity to just dig in and really see where we can go. So I'm looking forward to the meetings in the, the next month, it's going to be a busy month for this selection committee because we have lots of work to do to get these schools started, but I'm really excited. So I want to thank all of you guys for being here tonight. And if you didn't have an opportunity to talk, or maybe this isn't the, the platform for you to share your thoughts, we all, all of our phone numbers and emails are on the website. So I know personally, I'm, I'm just a phone call away. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Ms. Conrad?
Oh, okay, I'll jump in. I first want to thank you all for being here our first session, we didn't have anybody show up. So I, I'm super excited to see people involved in the process, experts in building, and here to share their expertise with us. So thank you for taking time to be here with us tonight. I also want to thank Mr. Powers for asking that you share your contact information with us. I did have trouble hearing some of your comments, especially Mr. Tillman, where's, did he, is he, he's there? If you don't mind sharing your comments, if you have them, if you can forward them so I can look over them. I thought there were a lot of good points that everyone shared this evening. Some comments that I had were, were similar to Dr. James with our inflated budget with our COVID money, which sunsets in 2024, I believe. I am interested in kind of a sliding scale when you talk about the size of the home and what the fee will be, and so that's why I'm interested in you guys leaving your contact information with you, because that's not my area of expertise, and I would love to sit down and visit with you on some of the ideas you shared this evening. I too don't think we can slow this train down. We've kind of been, Marion County's been sitting in on its hands for education and building homes and bringing people to Marion County, one of the first things they ask is about the education system. And so to move the education system forward, we cannot have overcrowded schools. So that is important to me, the new, two new schools that we're working on, I'm excited to move forward, and I'm looking forward to that process. One point I do want to make also about charter schools, it's a great option for us, but I do want to point out, there are certain limitations as far as representing the community. You know, our schools serve as shelters, they meet a lot of requirements that other buildings are not required to, and so just food for thought as we talk about opening up that as an option. We do lose some of the benefits of building a regular school when we do that. So just something I wanted to share. I was excited that, thankful that Dr. James brought up the process for the selection committee. And there were some clauses, there were some clauses in here that caused me to pause and reflect, because I, I too feel very strongly about supporting our businesses here in Marion County. And so I just wanted to share as part of the committee process, and I wanted to get some clarification. So at the bottom of page one, those of you that are working through the packet or you have it, the final selection process score will be based on the full value of the scores in the interview process. And so the part that I was questioning, I just need some clarification, Ms. Dobbins, I don't know if this is a question for you, or, and you're free to reach out to me afterwards. But the way I read it is that if you had, if you had billed schools in Marion County, were you losing points for that?
I can clarify.
Okay.
Because I asked that exact question.
Okay, because...
So there's a metric on the scoring rubric, and you, for the last five years, you get points for year one, year two, year three, year four, and year five. It's a, I think it's one full point for year one, and then up by .8, .6, .4, and .2 all at year five. And there's a, you, you provide the number, the cost evaluation of the work you've done for Marion County Public Schools, and it's times that evaluative number, .2, and that has a, I'm not, I'm not good at math, we are all, you know this. And then there's another number, and that number becomes part of your score that benefits you. So if you have done work with Marion County Public Schools, historically in the last five years, you get extra points. But if you have not done work with Marion County, like, maybe you're a new contractor that is in Marion County but has not done work with Marion County Public Schools, there is still a baseline coefficient, do I sound super smart? There's a baseline number that you still get. So you still get points no matter what, but you get extra points if you've worked with Marion County Public Schools before.
Were you speaking specifically about impact fee credits?
No, no, we're talking about, she's, she, 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 I'm tracking with her, but she's talking about something else.
Gotcha.
Okay, I just, it was really important to me, because if we have experts in the industry, experts that have been building schools all over the state of Florida, I do not want there to be a penalty because you're good at what you do.
No.
And so that is what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, you just get extra points if you've done work in the last five years with Marion County Public Schools. And that's for architects or builders, so architects even having, having designed, or contractors having built.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. James.
You're welcome. I'm like an expert already.
And that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Vice Chair Thrower.
Thank you, and most of the questions have, have been addressed, I think, by other board members, so I'm not going to continue down that path. What I would like to say is, first of all, I'm very encouraged at the turnout tonight, I'm very encouraged at the phone calls I've been receiving, I'm very encouraged at the thoughtfulness and the process so far. We rise and fall together as a community. And those of us that have lived in this community for a while can throw it back to 2010, 14.3% unemployment, it was a bad time. Well, here we are today, 2.6% unemployment, things are looking a lot rosier here in Marion County. But yet and still, when is there a good time to build schools? When is there a good time to ask the taxpayers? Builders and developers, you're taxpayers too. It's, it's coming out of your pocket, it's coming out of my pocket, it's coming out of everyone's pocket. And I think sometimes that gets lost in the conversation, we're so busy thinking about how it's going to affect each of us personally and business-wise, which is understandable. In the end, there's, as a couple of board members shared, there's a reason why we don't have a lot of charter schools in Marion County. Where else can you graduate with your AA two weeks before you walk across the stage with your high school diploma? You know? We have the equine programs, all these fantastic partnerships that we've been accelerating and amplifying and partnering with you guys on, and so many others. You know, there comes a time, we've been overcrowded for years, and anyone that follows, you know, the school system knows where those areas of overcrowding are. It was not a good time to address them three years ago, we were trying to survive COVID, we were trying to keep schools open. But at the same time, we certainly had our eye on it, because that's when we requested this study. I was super frustrated at how long it took to get it back, you know, we were waiting, 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 we were all waiting. But now we have it now, and, and frankly, I agree with the rest of my board members, I'm tired of waiting. I'm ready to take it to the level that maybe most other communities have never seen, where we have found that secret sauce of how to work together, how to make it happen, how not to overly burden anybody, keep an eye on the ball when it comes to affordable housing, certainly. Finding staff is our greatest challenge. Adding difficulty to finding staff is something we want to avoid. So looking at tiering, looking at flexibility, being nimble is the name of the game these days. So I will close by saying I'm very much looking forward to the joint workshop with our community commissioner, governance partners, coming up on August 11th, and really bringing this to a place where we're all on the same page, where we're all in at least mostly, and I'd like to say enthusiastically, in agreement about what needs to happen, and then let's make it happen. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I echo the comments of the other board members, just grateful that we do have the response here coming, and the phone calls we've received, and conversations that will continue. This board will be meeting again on July 20th during our regular work session, and we'll be having extensive conversation potentially at that time, even more so than this evening. And then, as Vice Chair Thrower has indicated, there is an additional meeting on August 11th with the County Commission, where we'll be having a joint public workshop to discuss some of these items, specifically the, the impact fee. The things that have already been expressed as far as the budget, we will be receiving the 2023-2024 budget in the next week and a half, I believe. So Ms. Boston Ellis and her team have actively been working on that. The budget numbers have looked, have looked inflated for the last couple of years, but I can assure you that the 2024-2025 budget will look quite a bit different and more like we're used to, because the COVID relief dollars have definitely inflated the overall budget numbers year over year. The enrollment also was something that was spoken of this evening, and while the enrollment information seems as if we haven't had as much growth as one might presume, where that growth is occurring is part of the challenge. And we, as a board, are aware that the southwest portion of our county has seen the most increase. And as a member, a non-voting member of the City Planning and Zoning Commission, if I hear one more request, or the, the commission often asks me, is this another one impacting Saddlewood Elementary? Is this another one impacting Liberty Middle School? And, and the answer is often yes. And so part of the solution to that is to relieve pressure off of our southwest Ocala schools by building new schools in southwest Ocala. And that's exactly what is being proposed moving forward. A, a couple of other comments about affordable housing and so forth, statistics also have been evolving. So while we understand that our enrollment numbers may, in the last five years, they haven't grown to exponential numbers, we did actually end the year about 1,000 to 1,100 students, I think more than what the projection was, so we were more than 45,000 when we ended. People are moving to Florida, and about seven years ago, I remember, the CEP had a magazine cover, maybe it was less than that, magazine cover that said Silver Tsunami, because all the people that were coming to Marion County were retirees, and they were moving into 55-plus communities. I believe the statistics are a little different now, and even in the last three, two to three years that we've heard the CEP actively talk about, the average age of those moving to our community is about 30 to 40. That's the age of most families, and if they don't already have children, perhaps children are a part of their future. We know the U-Haul numbers are coming in, the CEP has, has given us all kinds of projections on us increasing in a certain age demographic. And when I think of myself, when I built a home back when, newlywed, before I had my first children, impact fees were on the table. And that was something that, as a newlywed and building a home, that was something that we, we had to consider. But now, three children in Marion County Public Schools are getting the benefit of that. So while I completely understand the affordable housing conversation, we want to stay in an affordable housing area, we want to ensure that we can provide that workforce housing. But when we think of workforce housing, we also have to understand, those folks that are in that 20 to 40 age range are also those that are having children that are going to have an impact in the school system. And so someone has to cover that cost. system. And so someone has to cover that cost at some point. And so that's kind of how I feel on this. Not necessarily, I, I agree with the tier idea. I, I'm not sure where we're all going to land on what a recommendation might be when it comes forth. I also understand that while we're having the meeting on August eleventh, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to sit down with our county commissioners and have that conversation collectively, we also know that anything that we put forth as an idea of a recommendation still isn't in our hands. And so we received a document today that we'll be talking about more on July twentieth, about a couple of the years that recommendations were presented to the County Commission for impact fees, either increases or reinstatement, or whatever that might have been. And at different times, those were not accepted. So we appreciate the opportunity to have the conversation collectively, because I think it, it does impact our entire community. But we also understand that the County Commission does have the final say on whether or not impact fees are reinstated at all. We can simply make a recommendation. So with that, those will conclude my comments this evening. And we again have the meeting on July twentieth. We have the joint public workshop with the County Commission on August eleventh. And we welcome all of those watching, as well as those in the audience this evening, to both of those meetings. And with no further comments, the meeting will be adjourned at six-twenty PM. Thank you so much.